Good afternoon, and welcome to this meeting of the Glenorkie City Council for Monday the 25th of November 2024. My name is Stu Hickey and I'm the Mayor of Glenorkie and Chairperson for this afternoon's meeting. The Glenorkie City Council acknowledges the Mooneeena people as the traditional owners of this land. While sadly the Mooneeena people did not survive colonisation, we recognise all Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the original owners and continuing custodians of this land and waters of the island which we. We pay our respect to Aboriginal elders past and present and we commit to working for a city that welcomes and respects all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders people. Joining me here in council chambers today is Alderman Ridler, Alderman Stringer, councillor Molly Kendall and Deputy Mayor Russell Yaxley, and we have CEO Tony McMullin, we have Alderman Steve King, and we have Alderman Stuart Slade, Alderman Josh Cockshott and Alderman Shane Alderton. And before we open our agenda, I take this opportunity to make a statement about workplace health and safety. Glenorkie City Council takes workplace health and safety seriously, and this includes physical or psychological safety. We have a duty to ensure that a safe workplace is provided for all of our employees, elected members, contractors, volunteers and members of the public who may be present in council workplaces. Council meetings form part of the council's workplace and it is expected that everyone who attends a council meeting will behave in a polite and respectful manner. Council has endorsed the Statement of Intent setting out how we as elected members have agreed to conduct ourselves in representing the people of Glenorkie. In accordance with this, any disagreement should be expressed respectfully, remembering both during debate and in decision-making that we are elected to represent and serve the people of Glenorkie and to make our city the best it can possibly be. Finally, I note that this open section of the meeting is being live-streamed and an audiovisual recording of the meeting will occur in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy. Members of the public are not permitted to make audio or visual recordings of council meetings. We have 20 items on our agenda this afternoon, and Agenda One is apologies. I'm pleased to say we have no apologies. Confirmation of the minutes of the open meeting, do I have someone?
Certainly.
Thank you, Alderman Slade, and thank you Alderman King. Any discussion? If I put that motion, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Now we move on to announcements from the chair. As promised, I've been constantly chasing the grant deed for the $5 million to repair and reopen the pool so we can release the tender documents. I'm very pleased to say that starting with text confirmation meetings this morning from about, I think it was 7am in the morning, between the Premier and myself, that we have confirmation that within 48 hours we will have the deed to be signed. I close the business tomorrow, in fact, and then the government will release the two and a half million to the council. And once we have a contractor assigned, I will release the following two and a half million. Now unfortunately, so we thank the state government for that, unfortunately because of the delay in getting the grant deed from the government, we have missed the tender window for 2024. But our council officers have told me that releasing major tenders during December does not result in strong applications. Therefore, the tender documents will be released early in January. Construction work is anticipated throughout 2025 with the aim that the work will be complete in time for the pool to open in late 2025, or the 2025/26 some of year. And therefore, we will not see any work being carried out on the pool site until the New Year. But I have to assure everyone that the council offices have been working extremely hard to make sure we've got all the elements ready to go, and it's fantastic work. I'm sure everyone will be really pleased with the outcome. It should be noted that this timing will need to be confirmed once the tenders are received and the contract availability is confirmed. The future of the pool, council considered a business case for the redevelopment of the pool today. That's the new pool. We have this very impressive, very heavy document here. If approved, we will commence our plan to promote the plan and lobby for the funding that we will need. This will include building community support, so we'll be coming out to all of those people and groups who supported advocacy for the pool and we'll be going to Rotarys, Lions, Provis Clubs and members of Lodge RSL, in fact, anyone who listen to us, to garner support. I urge everyone of the 93% of Glenorkie residents who said yes to the council applying for future government funding to retain the pool and develop it into a modern public pool facility that will serve the Glenorkie area for the longer term to get behind these efforts. We really need everybody's support to start advocating for an $84 million offering. And we'll also be using the business case to lobby all levels of state and federal government for funding. And bear in mind that this is not going to be just a huge project for the city of Glenorkie, but will have wider ramifications for the whole of southern Tasmania, particularly by the time it's built. As you will note, I would like to now offer a minute's silence in memory of our colleague Alderman Jan Dunsby, who passed away on the 12th of November. There she is up on the screen. I'm sure you'll all agree that Alderman Dunsby was a passionate advocate for our city and its people. The drive to support and assist many community causes was well-known and much admired. Our community has lost someone determined to fight for a better outcome for Glenorkie, and her contribution to our council will be sadly missed. Alderman King, can I ask you to lead the condolences?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is not a eulogy, but just an opportunity to briefly reflect on a long-term colleague and someone who served this community for many years with passion and energy and also served her own family. She was involved with Neighborhood Watch, she was involved with many other organisations. She was a passionate member of this council and was dedicated to getting the best outcomes, the mayor said, for this community on every opportunity that she could. She was passionate about people with disabilities, but she was more passionate about Collingwood, if I could say that, Glenorkie Football Club, and the beloved Jack Jumpers. But her greatest passion was her son and her grandson. That's what she would talk to me about and how her grandson called her Janma. And she loved that term, Janma, and I think the community could all learn from the passion and the service that she's given to this community. Although she's passed through the veil, we recognise her by leaving her chair empty this night, and this is two in a row. I think we've done this, so no more.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a contribution? Thank you. Deputy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Jan was a truly wonderful person. When you think back about Jan and what she's achieved and how she was with people, and she loved people. And she gave full commitment and devotion to her role here at council, and she loved our city. And her legacy, I feel that will be a lasting legacy of what she's achieved in our city, but also in the people of our city. I think she's done some amazing things. She really stood up for what she believed in. And she wasn't certainly backwards in coming forwards in talking about, if she saw an issue, she was going to point it out and make it well-known. And I'm really gonna miss her, and we're all better for knowing Jan. So yeah, rest easy, Jan.
Thank you.
Thanks. So I've only known Jan personally since my term here for two years ago, about when I was first running and talking to people about the candidates for that Glenorkie City Council election. It was clear how much respect the community had for Jan, and that's a story that just kept coming up again and again. She was such a reliable and devoted volunteer and community member. And as soon as I came on council, she reached out to me personally, was absolutely supportive, was always there on the phone if ever I needed something. So I have a huge amount of respect for Jan, and I feel really thankful that she was there as a mentor when I came into council. She's gonna be really sorely missed, and I'm really sad that she's gone. So yeah, rest in peace, Jan.
Anyone else? Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a couple of words to describe Jan. I think she was a very humble person, very selfless, always thinking of others in her community. Like, she was a proud person and very passionate about the city of Glenorkie over many, many, many years on council and even prior to council. I think she was Citizen of the Year in the early 2000s and was always an advocate wherever it was. And she was honest. One of the people I've met with at the highest levels of integrity, I would say. Always willing to give you her feedback and advice, and someone you could always turn to, to have a frank conversation with. And she fought for Glenorkie in many discussions, wherever it was, for the state government discussions, federal, the pool, whatever it might be. So I think Jan's gonna be remembered as someone who stood up for her community and embodied the soul of what it meant to be a citizen of Glenorkie.
Thank you. Alderman Alderton?
Thank you. I'd just like to say a few words actually, so it's better than me. I'll just put my glasses on. So I lost a friend, a mentor and a well-respected colleague in Jan Dunsby, but our community sadly lost much, much more. Jan was a people's champion. She was a strong advocate for people with disabilities and from all walks of life. Always going in the bat for the battler, she was selfless, devoted to the community and asked for nothing in return. Her past has led to a huge harm in council, and she'll be sadly missed by all. On a personal level, I met Jan back when we were having all the kerfuffle around the 12.5% rate rise. And we got talking one day, I had a cup of coffee, and she persuaded me to run for council. And she meddled me along the way, and I thought I'd have to thank Jan for it. Without Jan's guidance and support, I probably wouldn't have even run for council. So I really would like to thank her very much. She's the reason I became an elected member. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Slade, do you want to say anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Ridler? No? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, just repeating those words about Jan being so passionate and such a great contributor to all areas of life in Glenorkie here. Any chance she had, she would actually volunteer herself. When I first met Jan, she was a tech shop lady in primary school. So when her kids went through schools with herself, she would even volunteer her lunch in her days to help us out back then. And she's carried that through her whole life, just contributing any way she can. And we're sorely, she's gonna be sorely missed in Glenorkie with her contributions, her passion, certainly a legacy and an influence to us all in the council from here on.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'd like to say that I've known Jan for quite a few years in my time in public life, and I always knew Jan as a woman who fought for those with disabilities, as she had one herself. She was a fierce advocate for Claremont College, and she worked Citizen of the Year, as I think Josh said. But one of the things that really stood out to me was that she was a champion of those doing it tough. So whilst sometimes in discussions about rates and rate rises, you might get the odd comment, oh, it's less than a cup of coffee. Jan would absolutely rail against that and say, well, for some people that don't get the luxury of going out for a cup of coffee. So she always kept us on our toes. Rest in peace, dear Jan. You've worked hard and you've been greatly admired, and we will miss you. The Electoral Commission has now begun the recount process to fill the casual vacancy left with Alderman Dunsby's passing. This is a recount of the votes from when Alderman Dunsby was last elected, which was in the October 2022 council election. The Electoral Commissioner recommenced the recount process last Friday, the 22nd of November, by writing an email in to all candidates who stood at that election that were not elected to ask if they wished to be included in the recount. The recount will take place afternoon next Monday, the 2nd of December. We anticipate that we'll be able to announce the result of the AGM on, I don't think it's the AGM, it's the recount on Monday afternoon. Whoever is elected as an elected member under the recount will be elected for the remaining council term. Alderman Dunsby's position on the Glenorkie Planning Authority, the Access and Inclusion Committee, the CEO's Performance and Review Committee and the Safe and Claimed Working Group will be filled by nominations from elected members once the recount is heard. And that is an example of the tireless work she gave to this council. I don't know what is. So now the Fourshaw Road, Duncan Street, Brookah Highway intersection. Council is continuing to work with the state government regarding an upgrade of the intersection at the Brookah Highway, Fourshaw Road and Duncan Street. I have written on behalf of the council to the Minister of Sport Infrastructure, Kerry Vincent, and am expecting a reply in coming days. My understanding that the state government has requests for funding for this project from the federal government, and we await further advice. This is an extremely busy intersection which will only see more traffic as we head towards summer, and more families seek to make the most of upgraded facilities council has been restored. Therefore, we are hoping a solution that maximises the safety for all road users, including pedestrians. Now, the Tasmanian Police Christmas operations, this is very important. The Tasmanian Police will commence their Christmas operations this week from the installation of a crashed vehicle display on the front lawn of council from Friday the 29th of November. This initiative will be launched next Wednesday, the 4th of December. Council will host a free community barbecue and Neighborhood Watch will be in attendance. The crashed vehicle display will remain in place through December as a stark reminder to drivers to remain vigilant and drive safely, not only at Christmas but all year round. As the Yellow Ribbon Road Safety Council who advocates for road safety, we welcome this display. Now, on to the Treasure Trail. I'm very excited to announce that the Glenorkie Treasure Trail, a place-based campaign designed to grow the circular economy by promoting the charity op shops in Glenorkie as places to donate, shop or volunteer. With the rise of e-commerce and other economic factors at play, and a number of traditional bricks and mortar retail outlets in Glenorkie have sadly closed. However, despite this, the op shops across the city continue to thrive. So we are capitalising by promoting what the wonderful charity shops from Moonee through to Claremont have to offer. The launch will start with a fashion parade featuring some of our elected members, so that should be a bit of fun. And it will include at least six charity pop-up stools for the public to hunt for bargains in one convenient location on the front lawn. So the launch is Friday the 6th of December from 11am to 2pm, and I do hope to see as many residents and people outside of Glenorkie as possible. Benjafield Childcare Centre renovations. The good news is Benjafield Childcare Centre is undergoing renovations in the coming months to improve the centre's functionality, amenity and compliance with standards. Council has established alternative arrangements for family that use the centre during this period by utilising a combination of increased numbers at the Beridale Childcare Centre and a dedicated space in the Moonee Arts Centre workshop space. Effective families have been informed, and they've been notified at the works, and we're asking if they'd like to disclose their options during that time. The annual general meeting. A reminder, the council's AGM is Monday the 2nd of December at 6pm. Everyone is welcome. Last but certainly not least, this is really good news. I am thrilled and proud to announce that the Glenorkie City Council has officially been recognised as the Tasmanian employer of choice. That is a huge plus. This prestigious acknowledgement reflects council's commitment to fostering a workplace that prioritises staff wellbeing, raises inclusivity, supports positive work-life balance and upholds best practice workplace policies and procedures. Pretty good news, really, isn't it? This achievement is a testament to the hard work and dedication of everyone who works at this council. And thank you CEO for being its leader. It comes on the heels of another remarkable milestone. The Ex-Ref Engage 2003 Change Champion Award. Together these recognitions highlight the incredible culture council are building and the ongoing drive to be innovative and always be improving. I congratulate council officers for their passion, collaboration and unwavering commitment to making Glenorkie City Council a great place to work. Now we move on to pecuniary interest. Does anyone have any pecuniary interest for the evening? No. Item five, response to public questions taken on notice. We have one there from Eddie Steen-Bergen. We have one there from Denise Bryan. These are all in the agenda. And now it's public question time, for which I have 15 minutes allocated. And I have to remind everyone by law that this is an ordinary meeting of the council for the primary purposes of elected members debating and deciding on council business. In accordance with the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulation, council will allocate 15 minutes during each council meeting to invite members of the public to ask questions relating to the activities of council. Council's full policy is stated in the agenda, but I would like to bring your attention to the following rules. Members of the public are to announce their name and residential address before asking a question, which will be recorded in the minutes. Questions are to be put succinctly and in the form of a question, not a comment. Questions must not be inflammatory, aggressive, dupamatory, contain a personal tact or otherwise breach any rules of the meeting which have been explained by the chairperson. The chairperson may limit the number of questions asked by each member of the public in order to ensure all members of the public wishing to ask questions are given the opportunity within the allocated time. So I can chair the session to ensure everyone has equal opportunity to ask questions. Can people in the public gallery please indicate if you'll be asked a question tonight by raising your hand? Thank you. So we have three questions. That should work out quite nicely. As per the policy, as chair, I will limit each participant to two questions each and allow two minutes to ask your question, remembering it's question time and not time for commentary or debate. So I might ask the deputy keep me on the clock. As chairperson, I have a responsibility to maintain a safe environment for elected members and council staff. I have tried to accommodate the impassioned participation of I have tried to accommodate the impassioned participation of members of the public in recent meetings as much as possible. However, there has been some concern over adherence to the public question time rule. As a member of the public, you are responsible for ensuring your conduct adheres to the rule. And I won't be tolerating any behaviour that contravenes these rules or any person who behaves otherwise will be asked to leave the meeting. So sure, that won't happen tonight and I appreciate your cooperation to ensure an orderly meeting. Who would like to go first? Ms. Bryan?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, just before you do that, Ms. Bryan, I've just realised that we have a question on notice from Mr. Robert Holden at Sroddham and the answers are here on the agenda. You might proceed.
This is a straightforward question. In January twenty nineteen, the federal government granted twelve point eight million for the North Chiggle soccer development. Alderman approved the transfer of three point four million to King George V Development. And the current development at North Chiggle is approximately four point four million. What has happened to the other five million?
Hmm, that's before my time. So CEO, would you like to answer that or do you want to take it on notice? Oh, thank you. Luke?
Oh. Did you just give your title? Sorry, I forgot. It's Luke, you manage a property environmental waste agent. I'm not sure where you're pulling the figures from, but it might be from the website where it breaks down the different components perhaps. So there's, there's, at the moment, it's showing the two buildings which are being constructed because they're the last two phases. But it's also been the field works and the lighting works, which are already completed. But collectively, it is twelve point eight million dollars across all of the projects. So there's the, the new lighting at KG five, the new synthetic surface at KG five, the new toilet block at KG five, the new changing facilities at KG five and the refurb of the old facilities at KG five. There's the new ground at North Chiggle, the upgrade of the old ground at North Chiggle and the new cover rooms and function centre and lights at, at North Chiggle. But collectively, it is twelve point eight, but yeah, depending on what you're looking at, it might just show the two building works projects, which might be what you're adding up there.
Well, that allowed a place to be a lot more than three point four million that was moved to King George V.
Ah, there was, ah, yes. So I don't know again where the original breakup you're getting, where you're pulling these figures from.
That was a motion to put the council to move three point four million.
From back in twenty twenty-one or something. Yeah. So there's been a few amendments through. Then it's all been approved by the department.
I don't think it's gone to council.
Ah, the, the breakup of the funds has certainly been the council that it would be a, the original project was all North Chiggle. Then council agreed to spend more of the money at KG five, as long as the federal government was happy with it. So that's, that's happened and the federal government were happy with it. The splits ended up a little bit different to, I reckon, what it was back in twenty twenty-one. But it's all been okay through Project Control Group, which has the, the member sitting on it, wouldn't have been you.
No.
It is you now, but yeah.
So can I add to get an artist list?
Yeah, I could certainly.
Where, where the money was.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bryan. Okay. Mr. Gatlin, would you like to come forward? You have to state your name and your suburb.
Yes. My name is Manfred Goodman. I reside at Three Lawson Street, West Bunk. I have sent the council last Monday an email requesting that the council look into my documentation and agree with me to suspend the distribution of the COVID nineteen vaccines within the council area.
That's a question?
And I would like to know if the council has had a chance due to the immense quantity of data I've sent to even look at it.
Well.
I have received attention from the media, but I have not heard anything from the council.
Oh, so with my apology, it has been sent to administration and they're looking at it. And I think they're going to consult with the Tasmanian government. So if it's okay with you, we will send it to the state government and we'll take this on notice. Take it to you as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Just to give you a bit of comfort, we have a timeline of what to respond to. Seven forty, do?
Honestly, ma'am, due to the quantity of data and the depth of research, I fully understand if that takes a couple of days.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much.
It has hundreds of citations, scientific documentations.
Yes, we appreciate your interest and we'll definitely ensure we get back to you and it'll be noted. There'll be a response in the next agenda. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Steenbergen.
My name is Eddie Steenbergen and I live in Rosetta. My, my first question relates to an announcement on the council website back in the beginning of November, announcing the launch of a LGBT IQA plus inclusion advisory group. Apparently, it has a stated aim of making council more inclusive of people in those categories. But I've seen no mention in any council documental meeting of any intention to create such a group and no indication of any due process. So what I'm interested in is how that announcement came about. Essentially, it was no public transparenceness.
We like to be transparent, so I'll go to the CEO.
Good man. I'll need to check, but I would be looking at our community strategy and the community strategy action plan, both which, from my recollection, have gone through council. But I'll go back and look at, I, I suspect it's a line item in one of those, one of the, and probably more likely in the action plan of community strategy. But I'll, I will double check. Can we take, take it on notice, ma'am, and check it out?
Can I just have a half a question onto that?
Yes, you can.
What, what is the due process for actually creating the advisory group?
Through you, ma'am. We've got, I guess we have processes in councils generally that we would bring. For an advisory group, we would generally bring a proposal before the composition of the group. And then we would work through that at an officer level, once councils agreed to the establishment. We then work through that at officer level to, I think, that. Just, we'll need to look at the background and see where we're at.
Okay, I guess as part of our decision to be an all-inclusive council and we do have several members of staff that were then by with the LGBT IQA movement paper. Okay, anything?
Given you reduced the number of questions down to two, I'll make my second question. Back on November four, council had a couple of workshops, two of which related to active transport of various types. What brought them about? Was there any information in briefing papers given to councillors that could not have been released to the general public yet?
Oh, that's a big question. So I think we'll go for the deputy CEO for this one.
Thank you, ma'am. The papers in relation to work that's been done with state growth at the moment, looking at where active transport routes might work on the cycle and what other facilities might be needed. I still agree preliminary and really just gauging elected members' sentiment as to which way to progress, whether to create, well, whether to seek funding for things like storage facilities, dedicated pathways. Some of them may end up as permanent links, but some may end up as temporary routes around the cycleway when the transport corridor is developed further. So those sort of things. And looking at, one in particular, one in Glanorki is looking at how cyclist movements might work off the cycleway up to Close Street. But at this stage, it's to inform elected members of progress, but there's still a lot of research and a lot of work to be done on how traffic movements might be affected and, and what, what's the best way forward. So we're still in that investigation phase. So once we've got more work done and we know that the feasibility is there, then there'll be more community consultation undertaken directly within the community.
That appears if there really was a market substance of the public who used to be in what with the council?
There was a few stats and a few things about how active transport movements work, where's the best and safest locations, that sort of thing at this stage. But there'll be some consultation coming forward fairly soon with the community.
We could always put it into an open meeting when we have a lot more data. But one of the interesting pieces of information was that approximately ten percent of our population have no access to a motor vehicle. So that builds the case for needing better, more reliable public transport, all alternative methods of transport.
Thank you. This is a part of the question that been made from.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that brings our public question time to a close. And we now move on to item seven, petitions addressing council meetings. Have any deputations today?
None yet.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item eight, activities of the mayor. Hand up a one. Thank you very much, Alderman Slade.
Ma'am.
Thank you, Deputy. All right, thank you.
I've got no questions except for another busy month for yourself and no doubt it's busy as the year goes on. I just noticed there's lots of diversity now in relation to places you go to, but I've got no direct questions.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Yes.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. You have been very busy and very busy with the radio and the media as such. And I'm just curious, on the twenty-ninth of October, you participated in a radio interview with Triple M as mayor of the month. So can you help us share some of that conversation with us, please?
Oh, I take my mind back. I think it was just a general conversation with that one. Kaz is a member of the, she's a Glanorki resident, so she's very interested in activities going on in council. Can't remember all the ins and outs of whatever we discussed. Could I just ask Officer Kristin, can you remember what that one was about?
Sorry, ma'am, I think it was just a general discussion and the issues that were raised included the pool.
Oh, yes, that's right.
And city safety, particularly, particularly how we're engaging.
Yes, that's, so there you go. You have those two answers. Plus also Kaz had been our compere at the sixtieth birthday party and she was very impressed to see a CEO and mayor amongst other staff dancing on the front lawn. Don't say all. Yeah, so it was just a good, positive bit of news for city Glanorki.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
And the other ones, the other radio interviews are all related to either the being kind or the tales.
You know, I just asked and someone didn't have any detail, but the others really explain themselves.
Well, we might find out a bit more next time we put them in because it helps my old memory. Okay, anyone else? No? Thank you. So then I'll put that motion, all those in favour, raise your hand. Carry the animus, ma'am. The long term, item nine is the long-term future of Glanorki War Memorial Hall with the final business case. Those are the big ones. Who wants to move this? Thank you, deputy. Who would like to second it? Alderman Cocksher, thank you. Deputy, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Through you. So as promised and delivered, the formal business case for the Glanorki War Memorial Hall has been presented and first I'd just like to thank the MI Global team and all their partners for the thorough and really engaging process that they went through. They were very considerate, considered in their approach and very flexible with certain things in terms around dates to working with council. And so we really appreciate their efforts in this. Also, I want to thank the CEO and the directors and pretty much everyone in council. I think pretty much every section of our council team has played a role in some point to get it to this point. So your efforts are really appreciated and seen. The business case itself requires us not only to consider the financial factors, but also the benefits it will provide, not only for our city, but the region that surrounds us. The social benefits, the health benefits, the mental health benefits, the quality of life, the cost of savings for the health system, the improved wellness, the work engagement and participation, the ability to learn, to swim, see high performance and also everyday enjoyment. All these things must be considered and taken into account. The business case explains this, the positive impacts really well and the improvements with the, with this facility and the benefits that it will bring. Hand in hand with this though, with the benefits, is the financial understanding that must be considered too. The aquatic facility will need capital investment from other levels of government. And we know as a, and perhaps as a council, we may need to invest capital too, with likely having to borrow funds. But our major role in the operations side of things and the manager is the ongoing. So the reports date to this, this, sorry, of two hundred and seventy thousand over the first five years and then from year six onwards, four hundred and seventy over twenty-five years. So this must be really understood, that it's a facility that will cost. It won't make a profit financially. This is not unusual as there are many parts of council business that doesn't make a profit. But it is of tremendous benefit and the investment that the community wants and demands. So things like sports grounds, parks, roads, all those things, we don't necessarily make profit from, but we are providing the service that the community wants. So considering all this and with the benefit of the cost ratio that is weighing up the benefits with the financial implications, is a figure of one point oh seven. So basically, anything over one is a profitable outcome. So we must take that, on that risk of the forecasting in the, in the business case of the participation and the revenue and that the overall benefits. We need to make sure that the facility is used really well and is well managed and well maintained and to see the maximum potential in order that the financial implications and the benefits are continuing to our community. So I've really deeply, and as most of us around the table have, I assume all of us have read it all. It's, it's a, it's a lengthy, deep, deep-filled document. And I would be happy to take the next steps in authorising the CEO to see capital funding and for any potential additional ongoing funding as well. So I guess wanted to reiterate again that we must understand that facility will cost. And, but it's an investment in our city for the future as it moves forwards on. Looking forward to hearing the progress of seeking funds.
Thank you, deputy. Thank you, Alderman Cocksher.
Thank you, ma'am. I echo the deputy mayor's comments and it's been a long process. Prior to coming on the council, I didn't think we'd be in this position to have a discussion about the pool. But there's been many ebbs and flows, up to some downs and great advocacy from the community to get where we are now. I think it's great that we finally have a business case where we can go together and try and push state and federal government for funding. As the deputy mayor has said, it's going to cost around eighty-four million dollars of capital investment. So we will rely on other parties and I would encourage everyone in the Glanorki community to reach out to their local state and federal member. When the plan, if we do vote them tonight, is to knock on those doors, make some phone calls. And with a federal election in the air, now is a good time to obviously drive it even harder. And we do know that annually it is going to make a loss of around three hundred and twenty-six thousand a year. But we do have other facilities in the municipality which have the same, where the benefits outweigh the costs in terms of health and leisure and wellbeing, mental and physical as well. So I think it's pretty exciting to hear. Thanks to the state government for the two hundred K to have this sort of investment. It takes that pressure off council's bottom line. So it's always a bonus from that point of view to help with the feasibility study. And we did go through the elective poll as well, which said ninety-four percent Glanorki Brit citizens do want to see us get this poll work underway. So very happy to support this. I think it's been a long road. And now we continue on to the next part of the journey is to get our funding we desperately need to get this work underway. As a council, we can't afford the eighty-four million, so it's up to us to, you know, haggle people and get the peoples on side to support the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Alderson.
Thank you, ma'am. So my colleagues, Deputy Mayor Yaxley and Alderman Cocksher have very well summed up the process and all the hard work that's been done by MI Global. And I thank them too for a very strong and thorough business case. I think what needs to be mentioned here is that hasn't been discussed is not only is this a great asset for the city of Glanorki, this has the potential to be a great regional asset for southern Tasmania. So I can't see why we can't go. So I can't see why we can't go hand in foot, not only approaching state and federal government, but approaching our regional partners, including other councils, to see if they're willing to come on board to share some of the costs. And that way, I think we can together, as a southern Tasmanian community, deliver a marvelous asset and have a potential here to reduce these underlying operating deficits.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a contribution? Thank you. On the council panel, please.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Yeah, I don't want to repeat what's already been said, but I think it's quite rare that councils have the capacity that we've been given with the state government funding for the business case to have such a comprehensive case to put to state and federal government. I'm really especially happy that it really delved into quite a lot of detail into the social impacts. And putting numbers around that is quite a difficult thing. So I think that that has flow-on effects and sort of sets a precedent for this kind of investment in community and all of those flow-on effects to wellbeing and health. So very happy to put this forward. My only question is, as we go ahead with the resolution, hopefully, to authorise the CEO to utilise a business case to seek funding to support the project. Given that we've got the repair in the works, will that happen as soon as possible? Or what's the timing around appealing for funding?
Emilio, would you like to answer that one?
Through you, Mayor. That's correct. There is an impending federal election, so we will be leaving no stone unturned. I imagine this will be a long campaign. But we need to start with this terrific opportunity with the election coming forward. And we certainly, where we go from here is basically pull together a campaign strategy, if you like, to progress this.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a contribution? Well, I'd like to say that I'm very impressed with the document. I have read it word for word. And even though we are a, what are we, a non marginal state, I think it's a compelling document. And I also think that, you know, if someone like Dune Kennedy hadn't gone out and fought really hard for the Dune Kennedy Aquatic Centre, we would be a very sad state of affairs in southern Tasmania without an aquatic facility of that stature. However, let's bear in mind that that is getting increasingly old. Even though it's had renovation after renovation, it's still going to be tiring. And the same with the Clarence one and with the outdoor new Norfolk one. So this is a time in history where we have to go out as a team, use all of our networks and all of the members of the community have been so passionate about this issue, to advocate as strongly as we possibly can to get this facility, not just for the city of Glanorki, as Alderman Alderson stated, but for the whole of southern Tasmania. We have a really good and compelling case to put this forward as a game changer for the health and welfare of members of our community. As I said earlier, 10% of our community have no access to a car. And as we know, public transport's a little bit limited from time to time. I see the benefits for getting a lot of people in our community to healthy activities is very important for the health. And particularly when it's one of those predeterminants that your postcode is used to determine your health outcome. I think also it's a great opportunity for reinvigorating the city and bringing lots of people outside City of Glanorki into the city heart. It's beautifully placed with the other sporting facilities. And one of the other issues that really I see this fulfilling is the opportunities for our migrant communities. Because a lot of them come from landlocked countries and they do not perceive swimming as an essential part of their growing up. Which of course, if you're going to live in Australia and embrace an Australian lifestyle, you know, you're quite at risk if you don't know how to swim. It comes with lots of other benefits in learning all about water safety and sporting attributes and also teammanship and things like that. And not only is it nice to have, but I do see it as an essential asset for the community for all sorts of reasons. I have spoken to the officers of the council, the candle, to see if we can put in some more sustainability around some of the use of materials. But apart from that, I hand on heart give my commitment that I'll do everything in my power to advocate to anybody who'll listen to me to start pressing the flesh for this to proceed. So we'll do our best for this election and if not, build a case for the next one. Yes, thank you. Deputy CEO?
Through you, Mayor. With the recommendations, we may need a point three to allow all the additional statements on sustainability be added to the document just to approve the CEO to make some.
Okay, would you like to move that as part of your, as a to your measures? Just to add an emphasis on the sustainability of, how would you word it, Deputy CEO?
It may be to authorise the CEO to include additional information regarding sustainability. And Mayor also mentioned about the diverse cultures also using.
Yes, and emphasise the benefits to diverse cultures. So the sustainability in this case would be looking at better friendly cements, better way of heating.
So does that then change the price?
No, not at this stage.
No, in terms of the benefit?
Well, we're going for best practice. So that will be the buzzword in Canberra, if anything.
I appreciate that. I'm just asking whether having, having changing to different products, which is outside the scope of the business case, is it outside the scope of the business case? Or? No, Mayor, no, it wouldn't be outside the scope of the business case. There was always an intention to use the most energy efficient type thing, inclusion of solar panels, water saving devices. But the mayor spoke to us in reviewing the document and sort of be good to make more of a mention of that because it is something that's been paid particular attention in Canberra. Yes, so that's in terms of the advocacy on the side of this. Yeah, that's fine.
Through you, Mayor. So where we're at at the moment is that we don't have, we've got a conceptional design. We don't have, you know, a detailed design. There's a lot of work to be done to develop the detailed design. And that provides the flexibility for us to explore those sustainable elements.
Can I have the other?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, we have another hand up?
So just to be clear, we probably need to add minor corrections because the mayor's eagle eyes also picked up on a couple of old acronyms that weren't quite consistent that we should probably correct at the same time. Just, just.
For all the important.
Except within the detailed design, as one within the before.
In the case.
Yes.
And Emilio, is sustainability used correctly there? In that it's not necessarily sustainable to run, but using environmentally friendly? Yeah, yeah. Can you see that now?
Yeah, it's the second, I am, I'd just like to say this a little bit earlier, that's all.
Oh, well, you've got the case this week.
Yeah, yeah. I guess in terms of the second as well.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. So I'm sorry, I haven't written down the second. Alderman Cockshaw, are you happy with those amendments?
Through you, Mayor, does that look, second part makes sense?
Which one do you have problem with? To include in.
To make minor corrections will win the business case?
Well, the report only came out this week. We wanted to get it out and deal with it as soon as possible. But when I was reading it, I have an eye for detail much as the annoyance of everyone. And there were lots of things like missed commas, there were.
I'm not just saying, that sort of reads, as I said there, sorry. Corrections could be big things.
No, we might go minor typo.
That's all.
Yeah.
Grammatical correction, yeah, that's all.
Mayor, without wanting to end it, I was just thinking about if we're advocating. Yeah, it's got minor typographical. I'm just thinking of a nice clean council resolution that isn't going to. Yeah, we're talking about minor typographical corrections. They're kind of, they're kind of within the spirit of implementing the council decision.
Yes.
We're normally just doing there. That's what I've said to pass.
I'm happy for whatever the regulations.
We don't put them into a bias. Would you change the word diverse cultures to all cultures, my, because you're being a bit stereotyping there, aren't you?
Well, we do have this difficulty in that this business case only was presented to us this week. But we had this dilemma of wanting to get it out as soon as possible because of the election and also to answer the public. So it's not necessarily a policy on the run. It's just that when you read the case, it isn't as strong as I believe it could be on cultures, sustainability, both of the main two issues I picked up on. Does anyone else have any opinions I'd like to add? Thank you, Alderman Ridley.
Yes, Mayor, I don't like the words diverse cultures, would it be benefit? The benefits of accessibility for the whole of our community. Yeah, we encompass everything.
And take out the last bit.
Well, the other bit about minor typographical corrections with the business case, it really has been done by professionals. The only thing I suggest is that we write a, probably a revised synopsis of the executive summary. We stick to that. Otherwise, the journalists are going to go through the case bit by bit by bit. I think we need to be, one statement, correct, and don't emphasise that those errors in the business case because I'll pick up on that.
Well, we've already fixed some of them, but.
Well, if they're fixed, we don't need that. I agree with Alderman Slade, Mayor, that probably full stop after, what do I suggest? For the whole of the community and their full stop.
Thank you, Deputy CEO.
The version that went on the agenda on the late on Wednesday night is still the version that hadn't been.
We could update it.
A version, but it was just, it was already out on the agenda.
Yeah, I understand. We could just put the deal out there. That's all about the areas that we fixed up.
And at the risk of just reinstating this, I've just been to Canberra and met with two of the ministers. To get a case as important as this up, you have to have very strong benefits. So the benefit analysis, which is that something like 22% of our community is multicultural and does not have swimming as an expertise. Sustainability is the buzzword of the century up there. And so I think making this case as strong as we possibly can, bulletproof, is what we need to do. So I don't mind adding those two things. The typographical corrections were needed to document every page, but they have been fixed.
Yeah, so we delivered the last bit there, Mayor. So full stop after community. And what I say, Mayor, I'm pleased you mentioned that about the significant, like 22% of people haven't learned to swim. Probably a lot of these people come from overseas, never seen water, haven't seen snow. So this is interesting how you put it to the ministers.
Everyone, is everyone happy with these amendments?
Good.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Yeah. Okay, Josh, you're happy?
Yeah, I'm on.
Thank you. In that case, I will, you'll just please?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, so I guess, again, it's a, it's a, it's a big, it's a big opportunity for our city. I really believe that and see that as a, it's a great opportunity and how it's the sell. And so I encourage and look forward to the mayor and the CEO in, I guess, determination in framing these benefits for our community. And I look forward to hearing those.
And I do hope you're going to help me sell it. Thank you. Thank you. And that case, I'm going to put the motion, all those in favour, raise your hand. Wonderful, carried unanimously. Thank you very much. And I hope you're happy and it's fine. Thank you. And now item 10, the farmer that has moved to. Customer service report. Someone move this one, please. Thank you, Molly. Councillor Kenton has moved it. Can I have a second to play? Thank you, Alderman, councillor, no, Alderman. Do you like to start?
Thank you. Yeah, so this is presenting the customer service report from 22, uh, 23, 24. And the council meeting, it's fairly straightforward. And I'm happy to open it up for discussion.
Thank you. Any discussion, Alderman Cockshaw?
Thank you, Mayor. I think as we call it, we've got a customer satisfaction score of 86.9%, which is up from last year and council received 279 comments. So that's a pretty good result. I think our customer service staff are on the front line dealing with day-to-day inquiries. And obviously can be dealt with some hostile people sometimes. So kudos to them. They do a great job in escalating matters for our citizens where they be and getting an appropriate resolution in a timely manner. So hats off for a great result. And no doubt next year we're going for the 90%. So.
Through you, just a couple of questions, if I could. Obviously, there's quite a clear understanding between a complaint and a service request. I think that's a, that's a, that's a really good thing. And obviously with the 40 complaints that we had, 37 that, or 93% were met with the service level. Just a question in terms of the three that were missed. Do we have an understanding of the reasons why behind that? And have we got, I guess, understanding in terms of learnings from those missed three?
CEO, that's a huge question.
Through you to the manager.
Oh, thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Yes, we do. We've had a look at those. And although we don't find it, we don't see it as satisfactory. They were due to, and there were a couple of reasons around it. Around one was slightly outside the timeframe. Mostly due to the fact of personnel changes in the departments and the teams, which obviously we need to fix up because those handovers need to be much cleaner than that. But the majority of it was around, the three, all three of them were actually around. There's no changes that they can't. It's way late.
Yeah, that can happen.
Yeah, unfortunately.
That's fine. And in terms of the customer service strategy, overall, that's ending in 2025. I'm assuming that we have a plan to update the strategy. Obviously coinciding with Project Hudson, assuming that's what.
Yes, through you, Mayor. Timing, yeah. And a lot of the actions that come out, the current one, kind of waiting on Project Hudson to complete. And we will be taking up a lot of those, the rest of the actions. Then, yes, we'll be better positioned to be able to go into it and develop a new strategy. And we'll be basing quite a lot of it on a lot of the feedback that we receive constantly throughout each year as well. And yeah, we'll be much better positioned to then step into a new strategy.
Excellent. Yeah, my only other point is that customer service is face to face. And I think our team does an incredible job in working with our community, seeking to understand the bulk is very much a, trying to keep people happy and understood and communicated to. So our team do a very, very good job, which is in the report.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a contribution? No? Oh, thank you. Yes, I'm counting, thank you. Yes, you want a question?
Yeah, yeah. So also thanks for the record, really enjoyed it. And yeah, proud of our customer service response. And as, yeah, as Alderman Yaxley said, yeah, often a point of tension when people are coming to council and yeah, interacting with us. So my question when I was reading this was, I think you've articulated really well the difference between a service request and a formal complaint. And that's, you know, there's great documentation in there about that. And I was thinking about the grey area in between when it's not quite a service request, but it's not quite a formal complaint or it doesn't progress to that. The ideas that our community have of things that they want to see, but aren't necessarily in the budget. And I was thinking an example might be an elderly. And I was thinking an example might be an elderly resident who wants to see all ages-appropriate exercise, you know, area in our municipality. And so that, like those requests or like we need more services for the elderly, tho- those kind of requests should go possibly through the future directions survey, where the community gets a chance to say, this is what I think you should spend your money on. But I really wanted to make sure that those ideas don't get lost as they're kind of, you know, oh, this isn't really a service request, but you're not going to make a complaint in the in-between time. Very long-winded question is, is there a way to capture those people's inputs and contact them when the future direction survey is open?
Through you, ma'am. Yes, um, if they are to leave their details, we can. Um, unfortunately, most people do anonymous, um, feedback, the comments, a lot of them are anonymous. Um, however, each month, um, we do, uh, we report those to the rest of the council staff as well, so every month. And they're, and they're documented and available on our internet, um, where all the managers and all staff can see. So they are, um, then they're, um, all noted and they're all, can be acted upon. Um, but I, I think that's a, a, a good point that we could be kind of collating that and, and then contacting back those, um, at a later date. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to investigate.
Sure, thanks. Um, thank you. And just to follow up, I guess, I think that would be great. Not necessarily putting all the work back onto council to follow up, but just sending out an email or learn to all those people at the time when the future dr- uh, direction survey goes out, so they can have the chance to put them, for them.
And I, I'd just like to say, given the complexities of what the council deals with, everything from barking dogs to trees falling down, stormwater, roads, footpaths, uh, rubbish bins, uh, uh, seating in appropriate places, animals, uh, you know, those opossums and things like that. It's an extraordinary diverse workforce that, uh, work, I mean, that we have to deal with. So I think eighty-six percent satisfaction, right, is extraordinary. And I'd like to commend all the council staff who have helped make that possible. So thank you. Move back to Molly. Do you have any to add?
Move the comments, thank you.
Thank you. In that case, I'll put this motion. All those in favour, raise your hand. And the motion is carried unanimously. Now, thank you. Um, item eleven, the council and council committee meeting dates and times for two thousand and twenty-five. Goodness, thank you very much, Alderman Alderton. And I think I saw Alderman King's hand go up. So was it Alderman Slade?
No, it wasn't me.
Uh, Alderman King, okay. Would you like to take up the debate?
Thank you, ma'am. So pretty much this item is, um, proposing that we continue with our current arrangement of council meetings on Mondays at three thirty P M and, uh, workshops and, and G P A meetings, meetings continuing on there at their current timetable times as per this year, with the exception of uh, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth of January, as Monday, the twenty-seventh is a consecutive public holiday in lieu of Australia Day, and Monday, the fifteenth of December is in lieu of the twenty-ninth, which falls during council's shutdown period.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make any contributions? So, do you want to add anything else as the mover?
Uh, nothing further related. Somebody wants to open to debate and discuss a different time, I guess we'll, we'll move to a debate.
Okay, thank you. So in that case, put the motion. All those in favour, raise your hand.
Molly, you have a second? You have a second?
Yes, uh, Alderman King. All those in favour, raise your right hand. Carried unanimously.
He told me off guard.
Oh, item twelve is updated council policies. Thank you, Alderman Kendall. And Alderman Cockshut, do you like to second it?
Sure.
Thank you. Alderman, uh, Counselor Kendall.
Yeah, so, um, this item is to adopt some updated council policies. There's, um, no particular, uh, dramatic changes, just some updates and, um, in line with current practice at council. So I have to open it to debate.
Anyone would like to make a contribution? No?
No.
Thank you. Would you like to?
Well, I've, yeah, I've got a question on the, oh, it's sort of, it's not particularly on this, uh, policy, but it just was popped up when I was reading it about the, um, and, yeah, we've chatted about this before, um, Deputy Theo, about the, uh, significant trees register. And I was just curious as to why the significant tree register is an internal document by the council.
Thank you, Deputy Theo.
Thank you, ma'am. Significant tree register is, um, now, um, on our local planning provisions, so there is a schedule on it. Uh, we use it to, um, help guide us to, uh, make sure we know where the significant trees are. There are a couple of heritage listed ones, like the, uh, three, four, five, six, that's over a hundred years old. And it's actually on our heritage, um, register as well. But, um, I guess it's internal to help, um, our ARBA team understand what trees are working on and, um, the, the local planning provisions, I, I said it was an internal document we drew to, but it actually is publicly available if you've opened the local planning, um, schedules. There is a, um, list of, uh, the significant trees there. And when we do the next update, we can actually include that schedule on the, um, on, on C T O.
Thank you. I was just curious. Are there any other contributions? No. Are you satisfied now, Counselor Kendall? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Through you, ma'am. Just to say, Deputy C E O.
Uh, well, I'm just going to check because I was just closing the debate, but I'll allow it. Go on.
Uh, significant trees, like some years ago, we lost a significant tree inside carpet choice in Home Run Moon. It was only twenty years old. Painters came in, did the building and magically the tree was cut down, taken away and ross now, then ross Marshall, had a lot of trouble trying to track down who did remove. That tree was worth over fifteen thousand dollars. So my point is, are we putting on, uh, younger generation trees that are of significant value? E G, that's a good example, that we lost one right there for no reason. And we didn't prosecute.
Thank you, Deputy.
We, we, um, we do have a, um, value on our trees. So we do use, um, a method that's well recognised across Australia. And if somebody does, um, uh, vandalise or remove trees, we can actually, um, find them based on the value of that tree.
So we've got it on the register list, the point.
We, all our trees are pretty much on a register, um, on a, um, we use a G L S layer and plots where all the trees are. The significant trees are a bit different because they're ones that are regarded to be a little bit more important because they're older or have a place of prominence or, um, provide a certain level of amenity that been brought, you know, more than just a standard tree planted in a, in a verge. So that, that's the, um, reason we run a separate significant tree register.
And part to that is like years ago, the quarter of Fletcher Avenue, now the road, there was a New Norfolk pine. Been there fifty years. New owners come in, they chop it down. It was on private property, yes, but are we trying to pick up those sort of trees where we can?
Uh, through you, ma'am. Not on private property unless it has some heritage, unless it's heritage.
Well, it was only fifteen years old. That was a nice tree, too.
Yeah. Unfortunately with trees, uh, sometimes trees have to be removed for a lot of reasons, depending on their environment, uh, whether they're damaged, whether they're damaging other infrastructure. Some of those trees in Munna, uh, we've actually had to remove. I think the last one went a couple of years ago, uh, was the roots were infiltrating into the fuel tanks of the service station. So unfortunately we've got to sort of make those sort of decisions when we're managing spare trees. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy C E O. That's very interesting, hearing the hierarchy of trees. Um, Counselor Kendall, back to you to close the debate.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. In that case, all those in favour of the recommendation, raise your hand. Carried unanimously. Now, item thirteen, the financial report to thirty-first of October, two thousand and twenty-four. And the first hand up is, uh-huh, good, Alderman Cockshut, seconded by our deputy. Thank you.
Um, yeah, thanks, ma'am. Like I said, um, a very consistent result as per previous things. Um, revenue and expenditure are in line with budgets. Um, and we've got a small, um, surplus of point one three, um, year-to-date so far. So, um, we're tracking well from, uh, from a financial perspective. I think it's great to see. So, um, all works in part with our long-term financial management plan. So, um, keep it going, um, let's end the year strongly.
Thank you.
Just a question, uh, a, a comment, uh, is that, yeah, certainly a good start to the year, so, uh, that's great. My question is, when the, the pool is operating again, um, do, this is a little off the financial, financial question. Um, do we, will that operate like another business unit? Um, so for just like the Mac or, you know, in terms of the operate, operating and the, and the revenue side.
Through you, ma'am. There, there is a definition of significant business activities. And I, we haven't previously included the pool as a significant business activity. Um, but I, I, I might throw to the C F O just to talk a little bit about that. But previously we've, um, included our waste management business. And I think our childcare business, they're the two that we, two that we report in our annual financial report. Um, clearly we, we have some other things that are on the cusp, like the Munna Arts Centre and, and potentially the pool. Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tony. Uh, so in, in essence, we've got an option. We could probably adopt like the same ones of business, you know, or business. But, I mean, however, from a sort of tracking, implementation, giving up expenses, we can actually do it without separating it out. So I haven't made a decision yet. Obviously we want to get a little bit closer.
Yeah.
So going live, we can make the decision, um, and drive forward better. But please rest assured that we will be making sure that we track all the costs, um, relating to it as well as all the income.
Yeah.
And we will be able to sort of report that out very clearly so that there's clarity on, on operating, uh, costs of the track facility.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else like to make a contribution? Not. I'll ask Alderman Cockshut to close the debate.
No, have a point.
Thank you. In that case, all those in favour of the recommendation, raise your hands. Carried unanimously. And item fourteen is notices of motion, questions on notice or without notice.
I've got a question, actually.
Okay, thank you.
And it was raised by, um, some inquiries in regards to the Montrose Wharf short lining. Um, have we got a long-term plan for the Four Walk? I was driving past there the other day and like literally the water was gone all over. I know it's getting a bit testy sometimes. What's the, you know, ten, twenty-year plan for there? Because it is quite popular and it's very iconic, you know, when you're walking along to the My State Bank Arena. Um, have we got like a plan in place for that or have I missed something?
Thank you.
Through you, ma'am. Well, a couple of things, I guess, in plan, and I might throw to the Deputy C E O, your indulgence appear. But the first is that, yes, we have, we have asset management plans for all our assets. So, um, the boardwalk will be included in that asset management plan. Um, the second thing that we have to bear in mind is that, um, Wilkinson's Point is still, um, I guess, a moving feast at the moment. So we understand that the state government is in negotiations around, um, the balance of Wilkinson's, Wilkinson's Point away from the, um, away from the My State Bank Arena. Uh, and, and so that may lead to, um, future development. I mean, it has always been council's intention to, um, to, to, um, uh, see, see further development of Wilkinson's Point. Um, but obviously the, the land is now in state government ownership, so we're not privy to those negotiations. But there may well be significant development in the offing, uh, at some point in the future. And, uh, so it may well be the profile of the assets out there changes, um, uh, perhaps to meet, uh, meet some of those, uh, needs. We also have obviously the, um, the ferry proposal. Uh, and, uh, we, we, we understand Department of State growth is looking at, it, it's kind of both looking at the, um, issues surrounding the future development of the balance of Wilkinson's Point, but also looking, and also have to look at the ferry proposal and juggle, juggle those elements. So what I guess what I'm saying is that development, uh, it's likely development hasn't finished out there. So, um, yes, we have an existing asset management plan, but it may well be that there are changes to the profile of assets out there to, um, I guess, to, uh, respond to, um, additional development that may occur in future.
And on that, what is the council's management plan for the Four Walk in regards to end-of-life status for that particular section? What date do we have from that perspective?
Through you, ma'am. That's definitely one I'll throw to the C E O, Deputy C E O.
Well, that's a big, I think the C E O has it like a true, um, manager. No, the, the, the plan is to make payments assets until, uh, the end of design life, uh, which is the, um, the columns were originally designed to be treaded timber, were changed to steel because we wanted to get a longer life. And the, the design life of treaded timber is around the twenty to thirty-year mark, if looked after, because it's, it's painted. And the steel, um, is estimated to be about eighty years with proper, it's got the cathodic protection, which is to take the, um, current that corroded quicker out of it. So all that's in place. So the other thing is about the profile that, um, C E O mentioned would be if we have greater capacity, we could use the columns that are there, uh, take the top off, wider boardwalks on to, um, cope with the extra capacity if needed. Um, and then, you know, we'd get another twenty to thirty years out of the, um, out of the timber top. When, when the eighty years or thereabouts is up and the whole, um, structure needs to be renewed, that would be a whole new reconstruct. But the asset management plans do, um, um, include condition assessments over time. So we would know when we're getting close to that period of time. So, so we're still, I think they were built in, um, around the twenty.
Ten or something?
Yeah, twenty, or maybe just even.
Earlier, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. So we've still got a little while to go before we're, um, getting at, um, doing any major replacements.
Okay, thank you. So I'll take Alderman Alderton and then Alderman Ridler.
Thank you, uh, ma'am. My, my question actually follows on to the response that, um, C E O gave to Alderman's Cockshut's question. So in regards to the answer you gave in regards to Wilkinson's Point and the government's position on it at the moment, uh, where does that stand the council in regards to our future commitment to Lloyd Road? Is there, is there any, any movement there or any changes, C E O?
Yeah.
Um, through you, ma'am. Um, the, my understanding is that looks, it looks likely that Lloyd Road will get a, um, substantial, um, some substantially investment before it comes back to council. That seems to be, again, this is, um, very preliminary, but, um, it's, that seems to be the plan because, um, there, one of the issues that, uh, exists at, uh, when you're servicing the My State Bank Arena is that, um, there are a lot more challenges in terms of bringing traffic through from, from, um, from the Brooker Highway itself. And that there are some, uh, significant benefits in, um, bringing traffic, um, through from, from Goodwood Road. And, and clearly Lloyd Road at the moment is, um, is a, well, um, it's fairly, it's, it needs investment.
Yeah.
Um, and so our understanding is that, uh, the government is potentially looking at that, um, at this stage. But, um, it's always been the case that, um, Lloyd Road was going to be retained by council as an asset coming out of that, um, uh, agreement with the state government. Um, so I suspect we would, we would end up owning, owning, continuing to own Lloyd, look, well, we're owning Lloyd Road. Um, but, you know, upgraded or.
And honour our investment commitment, in, in other words.
Sorry?
And we would be honouring our investment commitment, in other words.
Oh, yeah, well, that's, yeah, we've still got, that, that's, yeah, um, that's the, that, that's, um, the two point four million dollars, which will be a minor, I'm sure it would be a minor component of the overall upgrade cost for Lloyd Road.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Ridler.
Yes, through you, ma'am, to the Deputy C E O. You talk about replacement decking on the woodwork. Uh, we certainly need a non-slip one rather than what was built. It was badly tended because the supplier, from memory, the supplier of the timber, quote, for all three firms, for the timber. And we end up with this piece of woodwork out there that's too low to the water level, level of high tide. So two things, one, it's got to be raised up probably at the minimum of three hundred to five hundred mil. And second, there's a non-slip deck and you talk about widening if depending on demand. But for the amount of money that was spent on that, it's. It's not a quality job. Nothing against our, our council. We, I think we did a good job with the materials we had and the budget. It was false from day one, particularly in that it wasn't high enough. And second, the, the slipping on the thing, and as you know, we have to close it when it's rough weather or it's very high tide. So there's a few issues that need to be taken into account, and I hate to see. Um outside of my lifetime, if we're gonna get up to eighty years and yours too, Mr Deputy CEO, um. That we're gonna wait eighty years to upgrade that lovely facility, but we need upgrade. And maybe that needs to be a stage process for a discussion at workshop, ma'am, in particular, particularly also with the artwork that was planned there. I've had a ten-year life service look here and nothing's happened, and the same with Wilkinson Point. You know, it's still the white elephant. What do you call it a moment ago, something else? We could, could call it our white elephant.
I think we sold it, actually.
Sorry?
I think we sold it, actually.
Did you?
Deputy CEO, do you have anything to add?
Um ma'am, the, the design life of the trees that go into the water is eighty years, the uh top's not that long, so when it's new, we could look at other products. You know, there's pretty good um uh reinforced fiberglass major products you can get now.
Yep.
Uh that are, uh, you know, probably literally cost effective when you, when you think about the maintenance routine, that's.
Yeah, and low maintenance.
Treaded pine. Um it could be lifted slightly. I think the idea of it was that it was to. Stay closest as possible to the water, so I understand it is subject to being submerged when we get the big bull tides, but, um, you know, there's. Possibility to play with the numbers a bit um when we do some future um renewal and up, upgrade works.
Yeah, curious to follow on that, ma'am. Uh Alderman Gears from Brighton Council told me for the old wedge track near the jetty around there. Uh because it's prone to flooding, there's big spring tides and that, and the recent floods we just had down the river. Um they're applying for a grant, Brighton Council to raise that walkway, put a walkway uh from the jetty down, probably first three or four hundred metres. Um I think that's something we can look at in the short term to think about replacing. The deck in between, well, first of all, raise it and then replace the deck, it's maybe, it'd be subject to a grant, so the road crews don't have to bear. A cost because it was subject to a grant before, and I hate to say that the road crews have got to spend a lot of money, you know, we depreciated it. They're going to turn around, we're going to spend more money, pass money.
That's understood, ma'am. We would always try and take the opportunity to get a grant to remake this.
Well, I'll take your word on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Slade.
Ma'am, I think we, I don't know half on this, but uh. We, well, the client has got to be at what that was built for. I mean, it was actually built for grants and was about uh. For, in fact, of, in the arts space, in the arts, a art sector now that hasn't been mentioned. And that's what it was built for uh in relation to the Glankey um Gas, Glankey Art and Sculpture Park, so. I think, uh we shouldn't get in too much of a panic, I think uh there's certainly five, ten years there that uh. We're not gonna, we're not gonna see it sinking or whatever. Um the reason that the water comes up close is to keep that. Part of design of it, for that art, that art thing. Now, the fact that other arts uh facilities. Haven't taken place beyond the main structure has been an ongoing thing which us, the council, can take on board sometime. Because the gas board's now, doesn't operate, uh but that's something that we can do with the community, but. Far from that, I think it's still a major structure. I, I'm still amazed at the amount of people that walk on it uh every day for exercises, fantastic. Um and I think we just monitor it through as normal, as we do for a normal asset, um but I don't think it's gonna fall down tomorrow.
Thank you. Agreed. A rather iconic structure. Thank you.
Alderman Slade followed on, ma'am, from my question about the sculpture bit. That's probably moving the workshop, not only upgrading that walkway, but also the future of the artwork that should be there. In the future.
Okay, I hope you bring some ideas of how to get some big money.
Well, not the Gerney Rock Cliff Tractor on top of the pile, that was from a lot of before.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other contributions to questions? Uh notices of motion, sorry. No? Okay, and that part, then bring our open council.
Move to go to closed council meeting.
Thank you. Alderman King and Alderman Slade are moving to go into closed council. So that brings our council meeting for today, at least the public open section to a close. We thank everyone for attending, for bringing along some very interesting questions and everyone online. We should all look to play a week and look forward to seeing you at the next council meeting. Oh, and I need a motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those against, that carried unanimously. Technically, Alderman King's left three, but we had a majority.
You have a good spirit.